To approve the demolition of one two to one twelve South Broad Street. After we demolition that, what are we doing with it? Like, what happens to it? Who owns it? The Borough?
The Borough.
Okay. And then what are we doing with it?
The Borough will try to sell it.
So when the Borough tries to sell it?
I don't, if you're gonna ask Borough questions, you might not have answers here.
And that's, and that's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, and that's okay. But my question is, I mean, because, I mean, if we're approving to tear it down, so we're approving to tear it down with county funds, and then the Borough owns it?
We're approving to tear it down with block?
Block grant funds?
Right.
You're right. And then the Borough owns it. Who oversees that? I mean, if, if, if CDBG funds are tearing it down, we have a lot of empty lots, like, and I understand this might be a Borough question, but what are we doing to get these lots back on the tax roll? I mean, we're, you know, between all of the municipality type organizations, taxes are a big question. So what are we doing to get these back on the tax roll? And are these priced to sell? And are we reaching out to the adjacent homeowners and saying, we'll take, you know, a huge loss on this, but we'll sell it to you for this amount of money, just to get it back on the tax roll type thing?
So?
And I, and I understand that that's a loaded question, but I too bought an empty lot beside my house for this reason. So that it just didn't sit empty.
Okay, so?
And pay taxes on it.
Borough lists them for sale. They have listed for sale. They curiously put them out, but people don't often buy them, so they end up sitting vacant. They do have to recoup a certain portion of block grant funding. So block grant funding can be used for flight and stuff, but there are restrictions on it. And so a lot of times, they have to hold them for so long before those restrictions are lifted and bring down the costs so that homeowners can buy them.
Do you have to hold on to them for years, or can you get special permission? And I only ask that because we can get special permissions with some of our grants?
Borough question.
To sell, to sell things if there's no interest? Like, you know, when we're talking income level things, if we don't have somebody who meets that guidelines, can we?
It's not necessarily an income level thing, it's a programmatic thing with block grant funding.
I, I do understand that, I'm just asking, can you ask, can you ask CDBG to change those?
But that would be on the Borough to do that, and I don't understand or know what their qualifications to make those requests are. Because again, they own the property.
Okay.
I would ask a stretch, though. Yeah, he might have better answers than we do.
Yeah, I don't know how they, what, at what point triggers them to start exploring that, but that's, that's a dumb question.
Okay. And I, and I will reject him. Thanks. I have my other question.
Really?
I mean?
Any other questions on anything else? I like when we talk about things before we get to them. It happens very few. Cool. Okay.
Although granted, we don't have a ton on the agenda.
Yeah, it's, it's a lean meeting. Well, it's gonna be a long meeting, but it's lean for, actually, um, the minutes, I need a motion to approve the previous board meeting minutes from June fifth. There are one. Do you think Straddle Poppy can? Yeah, there's nine pages of them. It was a three hour long meeting.
It was. And I will make the motion. I will accept.
That was, like, because we only got a fifteen year pre-cess.
It actually, it occupied a majority of our time.
It was, actually, it was longer than that, because we didn't motion to adjourn until after two, like, I recessed one or two hours. It was a long meeting.
I'll make the motion. Yeah, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not even really good job on these, so it was a long meeting, and they're very thorough. Okay. Correspondence. We received Department of Human Services notice of payment in the amount of ten or five dollars to children in the Services Department. We received the Northwest Central Emergency Response Group schedule of expenditures of federal audit, a federal award single audit report. We received the Tri-County Rural Electric Cooperative invitation to their eighty-ninth annual meeting of the members of Tri-County Rural Electric Cooperative. They serve a portion of the county in route, on Long Route eight seventy-two, but that's about the only piece that comes into our county. We received the P A E M A nine-one-one office funding twenty-twenty-four annual report. The Delaware Valley Health Trust twenty-twenty-five annual report. They are a provider for insurance for employees. And they received, and we received the C cap UC trust dividend return. And the county's return amount was seventeen thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. They returned the dividends back to all of the people that are engaged with them. They probably fall, so he wants us to see it too. On the chief cap report.
I don't have a lot. Just working on phase two of the stamp grant request, application. Paying bills. Running payroll. That's about it. We're good. Real quiet after the election, so. Till next month.
Do you have any problems during the election? Anything going on?
No, we had everything, it went pretty well.
I think, yeah. I mean, just from my personal experience, for running through this time, this would be our third election that we've been part of, and it was, seen as, it was pretty simple. I mean, not gonna say it's simple, it's not simple, but we didn't have any hiccups.
I mean, the only hiccup we had was where I broke the machine. Like, I physically broke the machine voting.
Jessica.
And so have your place. I always, it's always been me, though, even before I was Commissioner. If it was gonna break, Brenda used to show, we'd be like, oh, Jessica.
Well, considering we used new machines and we went without a hitch, I thought that was phenomenal, and it was able to go down. And, yeah, the lady that came, what was her name? Oh, well, Franz. Franz, yeah, she was awesome.
Yeah, it was great to have them here to oversee everything and make sure that everything, to stand on the imaginary X that makes things run smoothly when the person that can't fix it is there.
Like, my mail-in ballot didn't have a barcode on it, so when you guys received it, it didn't register that you guys received it. So I had to contact you guys to see if you got it.
Yeah, sometimes those labels, I don't know why. I don't know how that worked. Misty does all that. So in the, in the system, when she enters, who requests a mail ballot? It, it populates to a mailing list, and then those labels print, and some of them don't have barcodes for some reason, I don't know. It's just a glitch in the system. But, yeah, call us anytime, we can look it up. Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners' reports.
I'll go, I don't. Go ahead, Josh. Yeah, I got it. So, I would say, last week, I guess the highlight was, I had spoke about it at our previous meeting, but it was tailored by biomass energy, it was a company that was coming in to look at using the biomass available to us with the wood chips that we have here. A lot of timber that's getting left in the woods because there's no way to go with it. So we took him around to the few facilities that we have available here. He kind of, I think, had a good impression from the opportunity that we have for the biomass, but also the places that we have available. And so they're looking at, really, this, this could be upwards of a three-hundred-million-dollar project if they chose Cameron County to come into. And again, they're from, they already have one facility that's operating in Montgomery County, or Montgomery, PA. And so they've had success. They have to do a little bit of engineering for the next couple of months, they said, because their current electrification units use garbage from New York City and such to not burn, but they basically melt them and then capture the gases for gasification to create energy. So the engineer is gonna be taking a look at if we're not using garbage and we're using biomass to do this work. They have to refit some things. And the positive news behind that actually is it might be a cheaper project, because whenever you start talking about working with the petrochemicals and plastics and such, they have to have much more scrubbers to get all the pollution out before they make their send gas. And so those are some things that you won't need by just using straight biomass. So that's a project that's, again, where it's gonna take a couple more months for them to do the engineering for it and such, but we're in communication with them. One thing that I specifically asked him was his exact impression on if he thinks that this would be feasible in our county. And he said he was very impressed and he thinks that it would be possible, but we just be trying to figure out how we can make it all work together. And pretend Sheila for the pharmacy, I did finally, I talked to Mike again, and I have another meeting coming up with Hunter Kramer, and he's Deputy Chief of Staff with the Governor. And so we're gonna end up, we're gonna have this long conversation about the pharmacy at Rite Aid and trying to figure out what we can do here at the state level, how the state can help us so we can get a pharmacy implemented. So I believe I just accepted the meeting, I think it's June twenty-sixth. So we're gonna have a virtual meeting about that and continue talking about it. We're still working with the brownfields, I keep on saying this at every single meeting, but now that there was like the big team that came in for us to communicate, there was about seven or eight people part of that team. So now we're starting to, because they're all pigeon-toed into their own areas for the brownfield, meetings are getting set up, you know, for us to continue talking about the impact of us trying to clean things up in our county, work with our industrial facilities, and also the blight and such, and do the assessment. And so there's gonna be multiple meetings coming out of this, so I'll probably touch on it at every single Commissioner meeting, because there's gonna be a meeting basically every two weeks to talk to everybody in the team that is part of that process. We did have a rec meeting with the Emporium Foundation. The Emporium Foundation does help fund our Recreation Department. They were, just some questions about our direction, because we do have a new director right now. And then also, they're just trying to figure out that they're being as wise with their money as possible. And so my pitch is, I think that we should be leaning into Recreation for our area, because we already have the gravel writing going on. We know that people come here to recreate. If there's ways that we can start capturing dollars to help funnel into our Recreation Department, we'll need that assistance, assistance from the Emporium Foundation to be able to do that. And so that was a great meeting. I think we came out of it with very clear explanation of the direction that we're gonna take Cameron County with Recreation and Recreation Department. Then after that meeting, I was at the Senior Center Expo, I'm sure you're gonna touch that. James was there longer than I was, because I had the meeting. I was at Conversation, or Conservation Meeting. The only thing, they, honestly, I love conservation. You don't have to watch over them, they do phenomenal job, and we're just there to partake, to vote and help move things forward for their progress. They do have a new building that they just put up on, it's not Carson Street, what's the street behind Carson? I can't remember who it is, it goes to T-Tech. But they put a, they, they put a building in there to basically store a lot of their stuff that they can't store down here, that's more their outside things. And so I believe Ronnie Andrews and Water Company owns that property, so they let them put the building up there with the electric power, and so that they can do their projects and have an actual outdoor working space to work on stuff. Dark skies, we're still working on those. We have three different dates set for July, August, and September, and we're working with programming with presenters right now. They're waiting on that. And then the last thing is, we did have a request from a citizen for recognizing Pride Month for June here locally. And so what we did here for the county is we put out memorandum just for equality, depending, you know, no matter what race or anything, you know, that you're interested in, we're just here in support. And so we put that out to employees. And if we want to recognize anything as far as national awareness, we want organizations to come to us. And so if there's an organization that wants to do a proclamation of some sort, we are in support of those things. So we would encourage citizens to work with organizations in order to implement those proclamations. And right now, Farmers Market was really wet this past week. It was pouring, so.
Like, I thought it was wet, too?
Yeah, yeah. Still wet today. That's all, that's all from my report. Okay. So as Josh touched on, I did attend the second annual, hopefully annual, Senior Expo. It was well-attended, there were a lot of vendors. I was a little bit concerned, because they did have it earlier in the day, so I wasn't sure how well it would be attended, but it was. And so kudos to all the vendors that showed up and the Senior Center and their board for, for putting on a, a great program. And lots of good information, I would encourage anybody to go. We had different legislators there as well, Marty Kozier's office was there, and Marty was there. Senator Dush's office was represented, but he was not there in attendance. And then just lots of local agencies. I did not make a list, but just about every agency that you can think of that would benefit aging populations was there pretty much. So, again, a great expo to, to attend if, if you're able to get to it. I had my Cam, the Cameron County Ambulance Association meeting was on Monday. And the big thing, the big news that we got was we were awarded an eighty-nine-thousand-dollar grant from the MEI Foundation, and that'll go to mostly building improvements that are way past due for, for that space. So thank you to the MEI Foundation. On Tuesday, I had a Zoom meeting with Secretary Yuri Monson, and that, he is the Chair of Pennsylvania's Broadband Development Authority. And so I, I sit on a coalition, a ten-county coalition that's been meeting for over a year now, to bring a broad, a large-scale broadband project to a ten-county region here in rural PA. And basically, the, the point of me touching base with him was I really wanted to drive home how important it is to have broadband in rural PA, especially in rural PA. And I asked him to consider provisional awards, because right now, there's a lot of uncertainty with the, the bead provisions, especially at the federal and at the state level. But I wanted to drive the value of, of PA government is in quality and resilience more than speed of deployment and project cost. And that fiber is the most resilient and most cost-effective over time when compared with low-earth orbit satellites with their subscription fees and the maintenance costs associated with them. And another big thing that I did, and I, I guess this is kind of personal, and county, was I had my Leadership Elkin-Cameron County graduation on Wednesday, and I have my plaque here from that. I would encourage anybody that's considering it to get into that program. It was a very valuable program. I learned a lot, I made a lot of great connections, and networking connections. Even though, from this side of the table as a Commissioner, I deal with a lot of the agencies that they introduce you to through LEC. They really get into the weeds about all the different programs and things that they offer. So even somebody that is plugged in, so to speak, you, you can still gain value from doing, from going through this program. So I would encourage anybody, if you're on the fence, if you're thinking about it, LEC is definitely a valuable program. So that's my little plug for that. And also, we've had some, some IT issues that I've been kind of handling, helping to handle with, with our, our third company. A, yeah. ACS, yeah. The acronym, so many acronyms. I guess I'll end it there. I'm sure there's more, but I, I didn't write it all down. There's always a whirlwind of things that go through our office. As Jess is talking, I'll probably think of more things that I didn't write down. In our Caffrelan, I mean, I, I did write one thing down. So as our Caffrelan presentation continued, just one thing that kind of struck me was some of the information that he gave us was that generally, employees are happy to work at the county. I thought that was a nice little tidbit and, and good to know. So with that, I will end my presentation. My report. My presentation. Jess? Go ahead. I'm done.
There.
That's that, Borough. I'm done. I mean?
Okay. So I attended the LEC graduation as a mentor to James. I have participated in like, a while ago. And I also serve on the C E C board, so it's always good to go and see the LEC graduations and see the project presentations of what the groups have been working on. This year's LEC graduating class ended up doing a number of things across the two-county area, but what James's group did that impacted Cameron County is there's now an external AED station at the Driftwood Senior Center, because it's hard to get the ambulance service there, so if there is cardiac arrest situation in the southern tier, there's a place where they can go to and be directed to, to get to an AED that can be utilized while they wait for an ambulance to get to them, which is actually really cool. The other locations are in Elk County.
Yes, there's two in Elk County. I don't remember them off the top of my head. One's at, one's at Johnsonburg and one's at one of the parks.
Yeah, so it was cool. They have other locations that had a little bit more uptake, but it's a really cool initiative that they ended up rolling out through the help of that and Community Justice Fund. So Cameron County was super involved in LEC this year. I attended the IDA meeting where they were updating on the lots that the IDA has purchased. Some preliminary engineering's been done. They believe they can get anywhere from two to four sites ready for being shovel-ready for a new industry. It's underway, it'll be a holding pond, but they think that they can accommodate, there's a wetland that runs through it that won't inhibit what they're trying to accomplish for some industrial development opportunities there, so that's really optimistic. That was the biggest thing that was discussed at that meeting. I attended, well, I was sworn in as a new Board of Trustees member to the North Pennsylvania Regional College on Friday and attended that three-hour board meeting, which is gonna be a whole thing, but I am so excited to be able to represent Cameron County. It's not necessarily tied to the commissioning job, but I do believe that there will be a lot of benefits to the county.
It's about time we had somebody on here.
Yeah, like, we're the first Cameron County representative. Kate Brock's been wearing both hats, and so we'll, I'm the first true Cameron County representative on that board. And I am so honored to have been asked and really excited for what it can do. I know sitting on the advisory board has brought a lot of really good information into the office, and this is another good opportunity to bridge workforce solutions and educational opportunities with the county. Thank you. I'm super excited to have been thought of. I've been working on the FEMA grant with Laura and the EMA Office. We finally think we have some of it sourced out. We're waiting on two pieces of information so we can finally close that out. The work on the bridges has been done. Thank you to Lumber Township for doing the rip route projects through our memo, municipal aid memo understanding. We're just waiting on a bill from them. Ship and Township cleared the brush, and so all of the damage from debt like Hurricane Debbie has been rectified in the county. We're just waiting on the last couple of bills to come through so we can close up this grant. With the brownfields, I've been contacted, I'll be meeting with their marketing people to discuss marketing initiatives across the county from what worked through the Cameron County project and taking all of my notes and stuff for how to get engaged with the community and residents so they can do their community engagement piece, so I'm really excited about that, because it's one of my real house items. I was working last week to, to help with the prep for the Phase Two grant for this by talking to Assessment Office and getting some of the preliminary stuff to take some of the edge off of what Annette would have to do, and just try to help make it streamlined for her since I wasn't gonna be around to help. And I, I too will mirror what the Caffrelan presentation on our management department review was. It was really good to hear that even as a small agency, so many of the employees that had responded were happy and optimistic about their time here and what it looks like. We have a lot of people doing jobs here for not as much pay as what they have in the private sector, but their sense of fulfillment in what they're doing, especially in CYS and our probation departments, is really optimistic, because that's a high-stress job for them and for them to say that they enjoy it. And they're doing it for all the right reasons, makes my heart happy, I haven't known how to describe it, so that was really great. That was the tail end of our last Commissioners' meeting. So we took that, and like I said, I met with the Assessment Office to discuss some needs in their office and what they would like to do. So we're really just trying to hit the ground running with the stamp grant, once we hear what's actually all entitled in it after our recess, and how we can get moving quickly so we don't miss out on any of the first two-hundred-thousand dollars that we can form it. I'm sure it's other things, I'm gonna wrap it up there, though. Treasurers' report, expenses for the month of June will be reported at the July seventeenth Commissioner meeting. Our next meeting's July third, and we will probably still be getting bills that need to be posted in June at that point, which is why it's delayed next month. Onto old business. I need a motion to approve the demolition of one hundred and twelve through one hundred and fourteen South Broad Street property. Bid to award Bucktail Escavators per the recommendation of Cliff Clark, our Cameron County Economic Development Director. We opened these at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
All in favor? Aye. So move. The amount for that contract was nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. It was, I forget what's in the next one. I need a motion on a new business. I'm looking for a motion to approve the annual renewal of the EMA sirens and mobile phone contract.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright.
I have a motion to approve Resolution, Resolution twenty-two-five dash four for the purpose of the DCED application of Phase Two for the stamp grant. This would be the adoption of the stamp grant. The strategic management plan is going to be presented to us later. I need a motion to make a table for discussion. I'm gonna wait three seconds, we can discuss it. I actually think we should table this until after the presentation.
I, I agree.
So a motion to table resolution?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay. So all in favor? Aye. So move, we'll table that till after our recess. Is there anything for the good of the order? Any question?
Well, I was gonna mention in good of the order, because I didn't wanna do it during my Commissioners' report. So there is a ribbon-cutting ceremony that's already scheduled for the AED safe station that Jessica was talking about, and it will be on July eleventh at three o'clock at the Driftwood Senior Center. Everybody is welcome to attend. The Aroma Bakery has graciously accepted to donate some cookies in the shape of little hearts. And I'm also working on some other food donations, I'm hoping that the grocery stores and some of the places might donate some stuff for it, but we're trying to get as many legislators as possible there.
They're giving a demonstration, aren't they?
Yes, there will also be a demonstration on how to use the AEDs, and I believe CPR as well, Tom Tomaski, a local EMT will be there. And so, yeah, but, yeah, just to support the center and thank them for graciously allowing us to, to put it there. So, like I said, it's, it's a Friday, it's, it's at, it's at three PM, so, July eleventh, so just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, glad.
You mentioned in your report, Jess, that there were two to four lots that are shovel-ready for?
They're going to be shovel.
They're gonna be shovel-ready. Where are those lots at?
So the IDA purchased land from the GKN Airport Road Complex, so it's between the Big Flag Park and the road that goes past the old Graff Tech Building, it's kind of like triangular.
Okay.
So the engineer was looking at, they weren't sure exactly how many lots they could get out of it, because it's so industrial already. But the preliminary engineering shows that with the wetlands that apparently run through it, because there's a stream that runs through there, it's like, not just a drainage, they think that they can get definitely two, maybe three to four, depending on what the drainage math shows for water runoff and how big the pond has to be and stuff. And so the goal is to then create those plots so that they have electric and all the hookups necessary so that they can, industries can come in and build and buy them to build what they need out of it. Their goal is to use PA sites funding to help with it. And they're exploring what, once they finish the engineering, they're starting to explore how to fund the improvements to get them shovel-ready so they can sell them to local industries.
How, they run the lots, are they like an acre or two acres or something? That does seem like they big.
They vary, so there's, one is like close to an acre, they explain it like six acres. Yeah, like, one of them's big, they're like, it goes like from biggest to like a, two middle size and like a small size. The, when it was first purchased by GKN, they kind of forgot they had it. And so it was originally purchased to build a whole tooling facility on the lot, which they ended up not needing because we have so many secondary issues in the county, so they signed up for it with it, because they could get what they needed locally. So their plan was to put on one big facility on the spot. But when you drive by it, if, they like filled like the parking area for the Graff Tech Building, but that's part of it. And then there's like pieces to the front where it's wooded through there, it's, it's almost that parking lot and the wooded section from rails to trails forward is the lots that we're talking about.
Cliff would have a lot of them.
Yeah, and if you, he has it actually, Matt, you can call him and ask him.
So do they have any prospects that might be interested in that, or are they just getting it ready?
Well, it's still in the getting-ready program.
Yeah, they can't start to sell the lots until they know exactly what size they'll look like. So the next part of the engineering is to calculate all of the water flows and like what the drainage stuff is, because that'll determine the size of the ponds and whether they need just, they can put like one big pond in, or whether it makes more sense to put two ponds in, and where exactly the road will go between the, the lots.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a good question. Thanks. That's it. That's it. I'm just super excited about this project. Like, I can think of.
What's, what's a timetable? You think an eight or two, or?
They're hoping to meet soon.
Or like next spring.
Yeah.
I, that, that's kind of my, my life.
So you gotta put a pond, so that's not permanent and everything?
And like collecting the funding, they, we're, I talked about you think our funding for it, the P A sites, different funding available. Depending on the funding and the timeline of that funding will probably be a huge part of it. Um, but what's exciting is like, I know of at least two industries that are currently looking for a location and they can't seem to find one that exactly fits what they need. And so to have a site that they could build to fit on will be really great. Um, like Tyler Biomass is looking for a space that they can't quite accommodate, so it'll be really nice to have some shovel-ready sites available for these businesses that are interested in coming here.
Do we still have the, um, and I'm gonna screw up the acronym.
I do that all the time, and that was.
I just did it earlier, so.
But do we still have the, the, the Texas Senate? Remember, we voted on it, too?
There we go.
Larder.
I was gonna say Larder, and I knew that. That's our, that's what Brandon's program, who was the right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we still have that in the county to entice new buildings? Because if they're up to lots, that would be new construction.
Yep. So Larder program is definitely still up for that. Well, depending on the amount of jobs they bring in, the governor's action team can get involved, and then they can help find some state funding and stuff like that as well.
State funding, but for the most part, that's only for relocation from outside the state.
Yeah, so there's other funding things that are available, and the other part of it is, is with new building, there's other programs that are available to get businesses to build new. So we're hoping that we can find other things. We've been advocating a lot for this project at the state level and with our federal legislators just to like, Cameron County never asks for anything. Cameron County never gets anything. Like, like, we finally have something going on. Like, hey, look at us. So we're really hoping to bring in some external dollars to get this project done. Thank you. Thanks. No problem. Anything else for the good of the order? Are you here just to visit? Do you wanna give an update on anything? We love.
Just here to visit and collect some information and see all the work on the board.
Nice. You love when you come to visit. Well, good deal. Then I need a motion to recess until one P M for the Caffrelan presentation and the findings of the county's financial assessment and the stamp grant. I guess the whole proposal we're getting, right? Um, unfortunately, we have to recess because of D C E D's availability to accommodate them because they have to be here for it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need to recess until one?